Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of March 27th, 2024. Welcome to all of you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. And tonight, we have the pleasure of having Father Theo Anthony from St. Francis offer the invocation. I'm just so grateful, Father, for St. Francis's engagement in our community, the support of our entire community, and particularly the most vulnerable. So after that, we'll have Councilmember Gray lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Honorable Mayor Go, council members, city manager, staff, sisters and brothers, it's absolutely an honor to be here with you. Thank you for having me. Years ago, when I was serving in Fresno, all that I knew about Bakersfield was freeway 99. That's all I knew. And three years ago, when Bishop assigned me to St. Francis, people asked me two questions. Number one, where were you before? I said, I was serving in Western Australia. So they were like, what's wrong with you? From Western Australia to Bakersfield? That doesn't sound good. I said, well, I love this city. I love this people, beautiful parish. And one of the things when I first assigned, was assigned here in Bakersfield, one of the things I checked with the parish was, do you have pickleball? And they said, the city has got lots of pickleball courts. I play pickleball. So thank you for having so many different pickleball courts here in the city. So 10 years ago, when I was serving in Fowler, City of Fowler, near Fresno, we started pickleball with 10 members. Before I left, we had 200 members playing pickleball in the city. And that really helped our young people in their mental health, from all these gadgets to sports. This is a wonderful thing. So I want to thank you all for encouraging sports in the city of Bakersfield. So once again, I want to thank you all for serving. And thanks to all our brothers and sisters, fellow citizens for being here. God bless. There is the Father, and there is the Son, and there is the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us, in your image, to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. Lord, thank you for the civil government. We pray that our civil servants would acknowledge their calling and perform their duties faithfully, be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but they would stand firm for truth and justice, keep them safe from harm that they serve our community. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your greater glory. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Would you all join me to salute the flag of the most wonderful country on earth? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Father. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surmasing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations. Item 4A, proclamation to Katie Perez, Dean of Students at Bakersfield Adult School, declaring Adult Education Week in Bakersfield during the week of April 10th, 2024.
Colleagues, we know how important education is, and it's always my pleasure to be at the Bakersfield Adult School, because you have adults there who really want to further their learning and their experience and broaden their knowledge. And so it is my honor today to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the state of California will observe Adult Education Week, April 8th through April 12th, 2024, and whereas Kern High School District, along with its Board of Trustees, acknowledges that the Bakersfield Adult School serves the changing economic and cultural needs of a vigorous, expanding community, and whereas Bakersfield Adult School prepares more than 5,500 students to meet their academic, personal, and professional goals by enrolling in one or more of their diploma GED programs, and whereas Bakersfield Adult School prepares adults to successfully complete the process to become new U.S. citizens, and whereas in 2023, 214 adults received their high school diploma, 46 adults earned their GED, and 707 adults at Bakersfield Adult School and the Lerdau Detention Facility completed one or more career technical education programs, and whereas in 2023, 30 adults in the Lerdau Detention Facility completed court-ordered parenting and neglect classes to reunite with their families, and Bakersfield Adult School graduated another class of its two-year vocational nurse program. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim April 8th through April 12th, 2024, as Adult Education Week in our city, and salute the administration, teachers, and students at Bakersfield Adult School, and honor each of them for their efforts and accomplishments. It's my honor to be able to present this on behalf of our city. Thank you so much for your investment, and I invite you to offer some remarks.
Thank you so much, everybody. Councilmembers, city attorney, manager, director, everybody up here. Mayor Go, we just, at the Bakersfield Adult School, love what we do. We love our community, and we are striving every day to make our community a better place, to help our, to help our community members reach their goals. And we just want to thank you all for all of your continued support, Mayor Go especially. And we'd love to see everybody out on our campus. If you'd love to come visit, we'd love to have you, anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received 21 speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Christopher Beretta.
Thank you. And if you can all just be prepared, we have 20 minutes for this segment, and so if you want to help your other speakers here, it would be just wise to keep your remarks brief.
After Mr. Beretta, we'll have Lorena.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name's Christopher Beretta. I'm a member of Ward Three. So I'm here to talk about what many people are here to talk about. I know that a lot of people in this community want some sort of resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. Many of those arguments have been moral and ethical ones. Personally, I agree with those. I think they're right, and I think they're just. But if, if that doesn't hold sway or is not enough to convince this body, I would suggest two things. Number one, please consider that the United States directly sells weapons that kill innocent civilians in this conflict in the Gaza Strip. Number two, that the U.S. actively obfuscates the truth in regards to the United States relations and, and, and Israel's actions throughout this conflict. These two items should be of deep concern to every American citizen, no matter how you feel about how the conflict started or the parties involved. So the other thing I want to say is that passing a resolution like this may not change the war or anything to do with it, but it's not insignificant. It's a litmus test for how we, as a community, respond to these things. So please take action, consider what everyone here has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beretta. Next speaker, please. Just a reminder to all of you, as you come up, if you would just adjust the mic according to your height, please.
Lorena, followed by Mohammed Haran, followed by Mildred Gonzalez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lorena, and since the last city council meeting, the International Security Council has ordered an immediate ceasefire that was backed by 14 other countries, but because the U.S. abstained, the U.S. has, the Israel, sorry, has continued to ignore international law, because this country, the United States, continues to arm them with weapons and funds to continue their atrocities and continue the escalation of the murder that they are currently taking place. The whole world is watching, watching you, watching them, and they are standing with the Palestinian people in calling for their freedom and their right to self-determination. But by continuing to support the illegal settler colony, you guys are condemning yourselves in the eyes of the world. You say that you have no power or influence, but if you really believe that, none of you would be sitting up there today. We fully recognize that the word of the Bakersfield City Council will not bring an end to Israel's war, but it will continue to put pressure on our higher branches of government to stop all aid to continue contributing to this genocide. Even smaller cities like Madera and Alhambra can recognize the significance of their word and speak up and call for a permanent ceasefire, while you continue to pretend like it doesn't affect our community in any way, you continue to ignore our gaze, you continue to ignore our pleads, and instead, Andre, you're focusing on reconstructing a pickleball court for a second time within the last five years, totaling over $1 million, when that money could be going to better things? All right. And you also prefer to spend your time closing down small businesses that are in the downtown area that don't fit your aesthetics, with your band of bullies that you guys call the hub? If you guys had any time for all of that, then you have time to say the simple words and call for a permanent ceasefire now, but I guess that's not where your hearts are.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mohammed Haram, followed by Mildred Gonzalez, followed by Samer Abu Daka.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
First, I'd like to thank all of you guys for making me feel like I'm at home in Palestine with the checkpoints. Every single day, you guys prove to me how similar you guys are to the Israeli occupation forces. I stand here to speak to all healthcare workers, to the EMTs, firefighters, and paramedics. Imagine being bombed on your way to responding to a call, being ambushed and shot trying to rescue a child. Imagine not being able to drive your ambulance due to the amount of destruction and dead corpses that cover the streets. Imagine responding to calls without access to your vehicle, or being on the phone with a seven-year-old begging you not to hang up as you hear gunshots and explosions in the background, or digging into what's left of a home uncertain if its occupants are alive or under the rebel. To the CNAs, the nursing students and nurses, imagine having so many patients that you resort to laying them on the floors. Imagine working with no electricity as bullets and bombs fall near you. Imagine asking a child to hold her father's IV bag. Imagine working not 24-hour shifts, but 168-hour shifts for nearly seven months straight. Imagine assuming the role of physician and performing care beyond your training or scope of practice due to the dire circumstances. Imagine having to work even after seeing your entire family brought in body bags. To the physicians, imagine what it'd be like trying to intubate patients whose bodies are completely covered from head to toe to third-degree burns unlike anything you've ever seen before. Imagine amputating not one, but multiple limbs of children with a shaving razor and no pain relievers. Imagine having to rip open a mother for a C-section without any anesthetics, epidurals, or narcotics. To the therapists, imagine trying to explain a four-year-old child why his entire family was just killed, why he'll never be able to see his parents or siblings, why he has no access to food, there is no PTSD because the trauma's ongoing, it never ends. Imagine having 2.3 million patients just like this. This is the situation in Gaza. Our brothers and sisters have been on the forefront, saving lives to the best of their ability with the help of God. The sentiment of being a family, of advocating for one another throughout, through thick and thin, is often echoed in healthcare.
Mr. Harar, your time is up. Please bring your comments.
Today, I ask every healthcare worker listening to extend the solidarity beyond our borders. Stand in solidarity with our brethren in Gaza, where horrors of Israeli war crimes continue. Consider Palestinians as your patient too. I'm not done.
Mr. Harar, your time is up.
And the least treatment you could offer for your patients is to join us in our call for a ceasefire.
Mr. Harar, going over your time is disruptive.
That will allow medical aid into Gaza, so that our patients can receive medical treatment that they deserve.
Mr. Harar, your time is up, and I'm going to ask you to leave at this point.
If you can't do this, what kind of healthcare worker are you? To refuse treatment for patients?
Mr. Harar, your time is up.
Now is your chance to call and stand up for, with your brothers and sisters in healthcare. This is a chance to stand up for Palestine.
Mr. Harar, your time is up.
Palestine will be free.
Next speaker, please.
Mildred Gonzalez, followed by Samer Abu Daka, followed by Pure Dew.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Mildred, and this speech is for you, Karen. You recently went to a Leaders in Life event, and you gave the opening, the opening speech stating the following.
I know the leaders, I'm thinking about something that we hear often, about changes in the environment. But you know what? As leaders, you can change the environment. As you walk into the room, does the environment change?
You go on to make a prayer of peace, the prayer of St. Francis. As you said, we, as the youth, can make a change. I'm here to make that change. I'm here to ask you to help the youth and listen to our voices. Stop ignoring us. We will fight until you accept our resolution and stop supporting the war machine that is Israel. How can you stand there and tell hundreds, hundreds of impressionable kids that we can make a change in the environment when you won't listen to the people here trying to make a change in our environment? How can you stand there and make a prayer for peace when you're actively supporting a genocide? How can you pray for peace when you won't accept a ceasefire for the Palestinians? So I ask you this one last time. Are you going to stand up and support peace or continue to be a hypocritical Zionist sympathizer? I'm waiting for an answer.
Ms. Gonzalez, we've said this before, the council does not engage in this kind of dialect. Go ahead and conclude your comments.
I have a question for everyone in this room. Raise your hand if you think Palestinians are human.
Again, we don't engage in raising our hand.
Shame on you. The other council members have raised their hands in the past, and you decide to still stand with Israel.
Next speaker, please.
Samer Abu Daka, followed by Pure Dew.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
For the fifth time, you know, why bother? Try to explain why we're here. You already know very well. For over 10 weeks, we've implored you over and over to introduce a ceasefire resolution so that your exact votes can be recorded apart from just hand raises. Rather than doing so, you sicced your terrorist police force on us while claiming you want to listen. Giving us your blank stares, pay attention, Andre. Giving us your blank stares with no comment is not listening. It's tolerating our presence, hoping that one day we'll disappear and won't come back. We made it very clear that we aren't going anywhere, because while you have everything to lose, we have nothing but this. A genocide is happening right now. Every day, you are making a decision. When you continue to support the apartheid terrorist colonialist entity that calls itself Israel, you will have to bear the consequences of those choices, and history will bear witness to your cowardice and deceit. Karen, will you acknowledge the genocide that's happening? Or are you going to quiver your lip at us? Andre, will you acknowledge the genocide that's happening? Or are you going to give us that dumb clueless stare on your face for the fifth time? Will any of you? Press the button and respond. You can do that. We all asked you to raise your hand because it's the easiest thing to do, and only Manpreet was able to. And just because it's the easiest doesn't mean it's the only thing you can do. You can respond. You can introduce the resolution. You can allow a conversation to happen, but to hope that we're going anywhere is hoping that we will forget this, and we won't. You are running out of time. Free Palestine. Free Palestine.
Mr. Abu Daka, your time is up. Your time is up. Please bring your comments.
You can hit the button and ask to respond. Go ahead and respond. Do you have anything to say after five times of us coming here?
I've made it clear that we don't engage in this kind of back-and-forth.
Are you going to have a discussion with us?
Your time is up. Please take your seat.
You want to preach decorum and respectability?
Please take your seat.
While a genocide is happening right now!
Please take your seat, or I will ask an officer to escort you out.
A genocide is happening. That you refuse to acknowledge.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Pure Dew, followed by Rich O'Neill, followed by Amelia.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
So last time I was here, I was cut off. Let me begin where I was cut off. I was stating how Karen will not call for a ceasefire or a genocide because she supports people like Ronald Reagan, who support apartheid in South Africa. Make sure to have that in the audio, you know, for us to listen to later and not cut it off like last time. Also, Andre Gonzalez, oh my goodness, let's talk about you next. Oh, no, no, wait, let me go back. Karen, I also forgot, you also look up to people like Kevin McCarthy. Oh my gosh, that did not age well, did it? So Andre, under the agenda of miscellaneous, right? G1, appropriation of transient occupants taxes for spectator seat replacement agreement 2024-014 on Mechanics Bank Arena. Appropriate about over 2.1 million transient occupancy taxes fund balance to the community facility capital improvement budget for the spectator seats and replacements at Mechanic Bank? $2.1 million that you can use for the community? You know, the community that you like to stalk and post online, making sure that you're there because you love your fucking photo ops? Because huh, did y'all know that Andre was at practice at the East Bakersfield Private Park, might I add, that's under Child First, who's founded by Andre Gonzalez? So does that mean that you own the park? You're not going to answer that? You can't answer that, Karen? And then you're saying that you have so much free will, but why does after every agenda, it says staff recommendation approval of this appropriation? Isn't that like, hmm, not a democracy? And inciting and telling people how to vote?
Ms. Dew, your time is up. Please bring your comments to a close.
We're here, and we're going to be here every city council.
Please bring your comments to a close.
Until you introduce a ceasefire, and I'll be keeping an eye on all of you. Oh, yeah, Mr. Christian Klaeck.
Ms. Dew, please take your, Ms. Dew, please take your seat.
City manager, would you like to introduce a ceasefire?
If you do not take your seat, I'm going to ask an officer to escort you out. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rich O'Neill, followed by Amelia, followed by Ant.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Mayor Go, city council, city staff. My name is Rich O'Neill. I speak on behalf of the Kern River Parkway Foundation. Today, if you look at our Lake Truxton, there are a lot of mistakes made, and we wish to call that to your attention. The average eye would, some might say it looks improved. Well, what they did was they chopped a lot of the trees down, big ones and small ones, mowed down the vegetation, sprayed, scraped the ground clean. All this during bird breeding and nesting season. This was done without knowledge of the landscaping plan for the, for the lake, developed in 1985. All this destruction without following the goals and policies of the Kern River Plan. There is no permit or communication done to Department of Fish and Wildlife. Right now, we're developing the Parks Master Plan and updates to the, to the general plan. And so one of our goals is for the departments within the city to work together to coordinate their activities in places like Truxton Lake. So we get code enforcement working with parks, and parks working with the Water Resources Department. So LUD Day today stands for a time to regroup and start again to make the Kern River Parkway a gem of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amelia, followed by Ant, followed by Auntie Alauer.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
What's it going to take? My comrades have relentlessly appeared before this council, week after week, urging you guys to take a stand for justice, a simple demand for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Yet, their pleas are met with callous disregard, a soulless response from a council that harbors murderous police within these very walls. What more can we do? This council, devoid of courage and humanity, is nothing but an empty shell. Karen Go, Andre Gonzalez, along with the rest of this council, you have failed this community, and continue to fail each time. and continue to fail each time you choose to ignore them. Eight comrades are alongside me today, having witnessed your failures all the way from Fresno and Visalia. And we made the drive down here in solidarity with the Palestinian and Muslim community, along with their allies, for unity is paramount. And we will keep showing up. The Central Valley must stand united as we find ourselves abandoned under your jurisdiction and others like you. The government cares not for those it claims to represent. Their sole interests lie in dirty money and public appearances, which is a hollow facade that conceals their insatiable greed. You think just by showing face, you've done something great for the community. Just yesterday, four homes were ruthlessly bombed in Rafa, and hospitals are continuously being targeted. The bloodshed continues unabated, with over 30 lives lost near Al Shifa Hospital in a residential neighborhood. Israeli occupation forces have abducted 30 Palestinians in the West Bank during overnight raids, while 81 more Palestinians have been killed, leaving 93 injured. And today, 13 children were shot and killed inside of Al Shifa Hospital by the IOF. How do you sleep at night? What if it was your own children? Is selling your humanity for money really worth more to you? Do you not feel shame? Because you should. Shame on all of you for your cowardice and, much worse, your lack of humanity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ant, followed by Antia Lauer, followed by Omar.
You put up metal detectors and stopped people from getting in here to exercise their First Amendment right. You make people throw away their possession. I had a sticker in my pocket, and they make me throw that away. Otherwise, they don't let me in here. My friends have to throw away their nail polish to get in here to exercise their First Amendment right. And then the police just arrested them, slammed their face onto the wall because you don't want us to come in here and speak on the genocide that you're supporting. This is fascism.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Antia Lauer, followed by Omar, followed by Mary.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
So my name is Antia Lauer. I'm a professor at California State University, Bakersfield, in the Department of Biology. And before I speak on behalf of the Kern River, I also want to state that I support the pledge of the Palestinians that was brought forward here. But back to the river. So I want to remind the city council that you should follow the order that Judge Paltz Camp put out there, that 40% of the water is supposed to stay in the river. And with this comes data collection, data management, and data analysis. So the city so far has not really done that. So how can we be sure that 40% of the water is in the river? And you know, I looked back in my notes, and I found that the organization American Rivers in 2022 listed the Kern River as number seven of the most endangered rivers in the United States. So this is not the case anymore. So we had two years of rain, above-average rain. So it's not the achievement of the city of Bakersfield, Kern County, and beyond. You know, we have done nothing. And if you're not following what Judge Paltz Camp's saying, you know, when we're hitting the next drought, where are we then with our urban planning and no river? You know, you should know with our climate action plan and urban planning in general, we need to have cool water in the river, trees that provide shade, because when the weather modelists are correct, we will be hitting in a lot of heat waves in the future. It will be brutal. And having a healthy river in our community would be very, very beneficial for our residents. So I want to remind you to really work on that. And then also, if you need help with data analysis, collection, and statistics, you know, CSUB can provide a lot of help. We have a lot of smart students. We have a lot of ambitious and educated professors who can help you to achieve something good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. Next speaker, please.
Omar.
Just a reminder that we don't have applause during outside of the presentations portion.
Salaam alaikum.
Welcome.
My name is Omar. Firstly, I'd like to, you know, stand in solidarity with previous speakers who talked about the need to protect the environment, the birds and the water. Bakersfield, without the environment, is a desert wasteland. So please protect the environment. Secondly, I would like to condemn formally, aggressively, the security checkpoints you have implemented before this city hall meeting. Why? What are you afraid of? What has possibly occurred here that has driven you to make us humiliate ourselves and including your own city council staff having to go through these checkpoints? Thirdly, free Palestine. Okay, this is getting ridiculous. We've been here for months, asking you time and time again to just please say the simple words, "permanent ceasefire, stop the killing, end the genocide, free Palestine."
Thank you. And we have now reached the end of the 20 minutes. We do not allow that. Outbursts from the audience are disruptive. I'm going to ask those of you who are yelling to leave. Officers, please clear the chambers. Reconvening at 6:49. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item Public Statements.
We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on Appointment Item 6 or Items Listed Under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Calendar-- Consent Calendar Hearing Items 8A through C or Hearing Items 9A through B, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when the item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on Appointment Item 6, Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mary, we've received one speaker card for Agenda Item Public Statements from Mary Helen Barrow.
Ms. Barrow? Mary Helen Barrow. She's coming, and I see her approaching. Welcome, Ms. Barrow. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Thank you very much for your patience. I'm sorry that you had to undergo this today. I've been coming here for 40 years. We've had our ups and downs, our disagreements. But we've never hated each other. We've never disrespected each other. I love all of you and respect you for what you do for our community, even in the tough times.
Thank you.
I'll try and keep this fast, but I brought a printed copy just in case. I'm here about the proposed East Bakersfield mega apartment ghetto that is planned. There was a story recently in the paper. Just a brief note to express my deep concern for the impact that a proposed three-story, 38-building, 314-unit mega complex that would be proposed for East Bakersfield. As a longtime resident of East Hills, I wish to emphatically oppose the planned development by Simi Valley Development Company, Aurora Borealis Development. This abominable, poorly-planned mega 314-unit ghetto-like complex would likely necessitate accommodations for between 600 and 800 inhabitants, plus another 200 likely visitors and service and maintenance personnel traveling daily on an already overburdened two-lane highway and adjoining residential streets. Additionally, please consider carefully the negative impact this development and its inhabitants would have on nearby roads would have to be upgraded and expanded significantly. Local schools, preschool, elementary, secondary, as well as the community college would need additional classrooms and staff severely--
Ms. Barrow, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay. Thank you very much. In summary, I just wish to oppose this development. And I'll give you a copy of my memorandum. And thank you very much for your consideration and your patience. Thank you, and good night. God bless you and take care.
Thank you.
You have plenty of security, guys.
Thank you. And just give that to the clerk, please. And Madam Clerk, now, next item, please.
Appointment Item 6A, three appointments at large to the Historic Preservation Commission due to the March 31, 2024 term expirations of Kathy Butler, Stephen Montgomery, and Susan B. Stussy. Commission members will serve three-year terms.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. The council will vote electronically, and the city clerk will display and announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. So now, would you please vote? We haven't done this before, so if you're having electronic issues, just let us know.
Kathy Butler, Stephen Montgomery, and Roger Mobley received a majority of the votes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to appoint Kathy Butler, Stephen Montgomery, and Roger Mobley to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. If you have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with council members Weir and Core absent.
Thank you, Ms. Butler, Mr. Mobley, and Mr. Montgomery for your willingness to serve. Next item.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was submitted for Item 7C1, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. Council member?
Does any member wish to recuse themselves from any item on the consent calendar or to pull any item? Seeing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you. You have motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with council members Weir and Core absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearing 8A through 8C for approval.
Thank you. It's now time for the Consent Calendar Hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearing in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony. Only remove the matter from the consent calendar hearings. Is there anyone who would like to speak to have an item removed? Is there anyone who can tell me? We can--
Mayor, no one has come forward.
Thank you. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 8 through-- 8A through C is now closed. Vice Mayor?
Move to approve the consent calendar hearing items.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with council members Weir and Core absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings.
Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first. Then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public Hearing Item 9A, Public Hearing to Consider Resolution Setting City of Bakersfield Domestic Water Availability Fee for Service Areas in the City of Bakersfield Domestic Water System.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Water Resources Director, Chris Budak, is available for questions on this item. This is typically just our annual update process that we go through each year.
Thank you. Ms. Budak?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. We are bringing today the water availability fee increase. We are looking to increase our availability fee from $6,543 per gross acre to $7,334 per gross acre. We assume about four connections per acre, so it works out to be just under $2,000 per connection. This water availability fee cost covers growth of the system, so it includes source as well as infrastructure like storage tanks or wells to meet the growth of the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Budak. At this time, Item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation to increase this domestic water availability fee? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. At this point, we're having somebody go out to see whether anybody outside would like to speak. Sergeant, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition?
No one came forward.
Thank you. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor of staff's recommendation to increase the domestic water availability fee? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Again, our sergeant will go out and check.
Mayor, no one came forward.
Thank you. So seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. So Vice Mayor, the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the resolution.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Council members Weir and Core absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next hearing item, please.
Public hearing, Item 9B. Public hearing to consider Title 17 amendments to the residential parking standards. First reading of an ordinance amending Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17 by adding, deleting, and amending various sections primarily related to residential parking standards.
City Manager Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Development Services Director, Chris Boyle, have a brief just summary statement about what this first reading represents.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. On our last public hearing on the 13th of March, the council pulled a component of the residential development standards specifically related to parking and made a referral as it relates to a revision to that proposed ordinance. The draft of that ordinance is in your staff report, and staff would recommend deliberating upon that and coming to a decision.
Thank you. At this time, Item 9B is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the residential parking standards ordinance? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. And right now, we have our sergeant going out to check. Sergeant, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the residential parking standards ordinance?
No one came forward.
Thank you. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor of the residential parking standards ordinance? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. And our sergeant is going out to check. Sergeant, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support?
No one came forward.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Arias has requested to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. In making the motion as proposed by staff tonight, I also just want to make mention of a couple comments that I had received via text from some great folks who are doing developments in southeast Bakersfield. Max Becerra, who was here tonight but unfortunately couldn't make comment because of the protests that's happening tonight, and he just wanted to say, "Mayor Go and members of the city council, my name is Max Becerra, and I'm the principal of Pacificus Forward Company. I'm here to support city staff's Item 9B to recommend new amendments to the residential parking standards." His partner, Eric Mora, said the same thing. I've had many conversations with folks in the development community who are in support of staff's recommendations tonight, so I just move approval. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please...oh, I'm sorry. Patty, Councilmember Gray.
I need clarification on what we are doing here exactly tonight. Are we approving this parking standard? What are we doing?
Mayor, Councilmember Gray, you are giving first reading to the redline version that was in your packet.
Okay, so...
That would mean you're approving all of the redline that's in the packet.
So we would be approving all the new standards tonight? Because I'm getting mixed messages that that's not what we're voting on tonight. We're voting on...
No, you are voting on that, and that's first reading. And then we will bring it back on April 10th for second reading, and then it will be in effect 30 days after.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Arias?
I'm totally confused.
Yep. I think the confusion might stem from the fact that this is a bifurcation of Title 17 and the amendments as initially proposed. Could staff walk the council through how that's taken place over the past couple of meetings?
Thank you, Councilmember. Originally on the...originally on the 28th of February, staff brought a comprehensive package of residential zoning standards to your dais.
Right.
Within that dialogue, the component of the ordinance, everything about that ordinance except for the parking standards, went through first read.
Right.
In other words, the introduction of the ordinance, deliberation about it, and such. There was concerns about a parking standard, the parking standards having no minimum standards, and ultimately, my recommendation to council was to perhaps pull that component from their action that night, which you did. At the same time, during that action, Councilmember Arias made a referral to bring back an ordinance that had specific standards associated with it. That redline version of that ordinance is before you tonight and is available for a first reading. The remainder of the zoning code that was specific to zone districts and the like, that went through second read tonight as part of consent calendar public hearings. Pardon me, just consent calendar. So, everything about the ordinance that, except for the parking standards, has gone through the process, it will await 30 days before it becomes law. The portion of the parking is before you tonight as a first read. If you take positive steps in affirming that first read and voting in favor of that first read, it will come back to you on April 10th as part of a second read, and then subsequently become law in 30 days thereafter. So your action tonight is specific to the ordinance as proposed in Councilmember Arias's referral.
Okay, so I vote in favor or against what has been referred tonight, then I'm...
That would be correct.
Correct. Okay. Because I was told earlier that's not what we were doing, so that's where my confusion was lying, so...okay, so then I would like to speak on this item that I am in opposition to these parking standards. For several reasons, and after speaking with other stakeholders in the community myself, I believe, number one, there will be bad actors that will come into Bakersfield from out of town and try to take advantage of these, eliminating these parking standards. I feel that, like I said a month ago, I feel like we're pushing this high-density society that's only going to create more chaos for residents living in cramped areas, and then to boot with no parking and having to deal with that on a regular basis, I think is going to create a lot of tension in our city. And then, number three, I have concerns that reducing required parking to only 0.25% spaces per unit in a multifamily projects of 20 units per acre or more in suburban areas of the city will force excessive unaccommodated parking demand on public streets, because people are going to need somewhere to park. And when I look at these parking standards, and I reviewed all this before it came tonight, and then this is very even better presented, and I appreciate the PowerPoint style that you gave us, that concerns me even further. And I have heard from other stakeholders that they didn't feel like there's been enough time from March 13th meeting to now to really properly vet this motion before we're going to adopt it or reject it. So I would like to make a motion to delay this vote on these parking standards until we have a full council present, and we meet with other local stakeholders, the ones that I've been speaking with that have real concerns about this, and that are sincerely concerned for the welfare of our city, because we have opened our doors up now to out-of-state, not out-of-state, I mean out of, you know, outside of our area, to developers to come in and just be worried about their bottom line only, instead of the really, the real concern is the welfare of our city. And I'm like, this is going to be with us for decades, so why are we rushing this the way we're rushing it? That's what I, you know, I want to know. So, anyway, I'd like to make that motion that we delay this vote if this is what we're doing tonight to either accept or reject this, these new parking standards. Delay that until further conversation with other stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I must have misunderstood the conversation with Mr. Clegg. I wasn't at the meeting last time, so I know there...the previous meeting, we had discussed trying to come up with an alternate parking standard just for the multifamily, that everything else...I thought the bifurcation was everything else had been talked about and pretty much most people agreed to, and the only area of controversy was the multifamily parking standard. We didn't all agree on that. And I heard that Councilman Arias had, I guess, a meeting I wasn't here, come up with a proposal. But my understanding, maybe I misunderstood you, Christian, was tonight we were voting on that, on everything but the multifamily, which wasn't resolved yet, and I don't think most of that was controversial, which was like 90% of everything, except even for the normal residential parking. It was simply this one item of multifamily parking standard that my understanding is that wasn't coming back to us until April 10th, I think it was April 10th, and that there was an opportunity for discussion on that. So, did I understand that wrong?
Councilmember Freeman, I think Councilmember Gray as well. I apologize if I was less than clear in my communication. I was reflecting that the second reading, which is really necessary for it to move forward, that it's not enacted into law until you get to the second reading, and the second reading will happen on April 10th, and so there's still the next meeting until this conversation really is fully sort of vetted and decided is on the second reading at your next meeting. But it is on the agenda for first reading tonight.
So are we...I'm sure I'm clear that we've...they aren't bifurcated. We've merged them all back together. It's an all or nothing, as opposed to saying everything but the multifamily standard is in one approval, and the multifamily standard is on a different track. And tonight we were voting on, I thought, everything but the multifamily standard, and I was supportive of everything but that one. I know I couldn't be at the meeting last time, and I guess something happened that I didn't have any input into, but are you saying we've already passed them both?
Sorry.
It's just a second reading, or this is...are there two motions, or is it one?
If I may, Councilmember Freeman and Mayor and Council, earlier tonight, when you adopted the consent agenda, you did adopt the second reading of that, the rest of the residential zoning code update, so it was bifurcated.
Okay, okay.
You did vote on that earlier tonight. That is done with the zoning changes, the higher densities. That's all done.
Yeah, okay.
I would clarify, though, the parking, I would say it's more about, it was a bifurcation of parking and the zoning. So the parking is for first reading tonight, but it's all parking. It's not just multifamily or other.
It's...okay, so we didn't, we didn't remove the multifamily-
Thank you.
-for a different discussion. It's all parking of all kinds.
Correct. All residential, excuse me, all residential parking. Thank you.
Okay, and then the second reading will be on the 10th?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then, I...not understanding. Since the only portion that I'd hope we'd have a little more discussion, that we might someday find a way to have consensus on something, was that one portion on the multifamily. So if the vote is for the entire parking thing, everything thrown into it, then I would agree with Councilwoman Gray that, you know, I'm not ready to support the whole package. I was everything but this one item of parking, but that didn't seem to be the way it's being packaged, so...okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Any other council members wishing to speak? So we have Councilmember Gray's motion. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion fails, with Councilmember... Motion fails with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, Councilmember Arias, and Councilmember Smith voting no, and Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Core absent.
Thank you. And now we'll take Councilmember Arias's motion. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Freeman and Councilmember Gray voting no, and Councilmembers Weir and Core absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just three items tonight. First and foremost, I just want to reaffirm the mayor's statement earlier in the council's practice not to respond to public comments by raising of hands or any type of responses to specific questions that, from my experience, has never been a practice on this city council or in my prior service on the Bakersfield City School Board. And so I think we're best served when we maintain that practice as a council and a governing body. But I do want to respond to a comment that was made regarding Children First. And just want to clarify to the public, Children First is a nonprofit organization. Yes, I founded Children First. I led the effort to build a private pocket park that is owned and operated by the nonprofit organization. But no, I do not own the pocket park, and neither do I control it. Actually, we have a, we have staff members who actually are responsible for the day-to-day operations of that facility. But I do visit from time to time. And so just wanted to clarify that to the public. The park was built as a gift to the children of East Bakersfield, and we want to maintain that facility. But no, I do not own that park or control it. The other day, just yesterday in fact, we had a Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting where the committee explored the option to expand the Brundisley Navigation Center and look at perhaps a safe camp to meet the needs, the growing needs of our community as it relates to the number of unhoused individuals on our streets every single night. If, and I hope that staff can share with the full council the monthly report that the committee receives that outlines the various different metrics that we use to really measure our impact in terms of homelessness and our outreach efforts, but also brings up some pretty stark realities. And that is that 55 individuals on a weekly basis are denied access to Brundisley Navigation Center because the shelter is full. There are no beds available. These are individuals who are willing, they're ready to go. Some are begging to get off the street, and they're suffering on our streets every single night. They need help. They're in an emergency crisis situation. And it has been consistent, that 55 number has been consistent, week after week, month after month. And yes, we're moving people out of the shelter. We're getting them into permanent supportive housing. We're doing the great work. But even still, 55 individuals are still bottlenecked and unable to access that shelter. And so I would like us to continue to look at how do we add additional 50 beds? We heard from the service providers who indicated and communicated some of the challenges that they may face if we expand the shelter beds. And I've had a conversation with them again today with both the shelter operator and the executive director of Mercy House, and challenged them to be creative and to figure out ways in which they can operate a shelter with an additional 50 beds. And they accepted that challenge. And in fact, they have been meeting to look at ways in which they can accommodate. And so I'm going to make a referral tonight that we bring this conversation to the full council, and that we have this conversation ahead of our next budget adoption so that we can plan ahead and provide the support that we absolutely need for those individuals who are begging to get into a shelter and there's no room. Thank you. And then finally, Condor's fans all over our community are mourning the loss of the Dancing Granny. Phyllis Hanson was an avid Condor fan for decades and had been also a source of entertainment and joy for lots of families, including my own family. Whenever Conny Joe would play, Dancing Granny would get up and start dancing. And I remember going to many, many hockey games with all of my siblings and nieces and nephews, and we would enjoy watching Dancing Granny get down. Sadly, she has passed away. And so what I'd like to do as we look towards the replacement of all of our arena seats, that we look towards saving one of those arena seats and providing it to the family of Ms. Hanson in recognition for her spirit, community spirit, and bringing so much joy to all of us in the community. I'd also recommend and like to make a referral tonight that we dedicate a seat in the arena in her honor and her legacy. And hopefully, her memory will inspire other grannies in our community to dance at future Condor Games. But God bless her and her family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in on the Vice Mayor's remarks regarding our Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting and provide some additional context that I think is really important for this council to know. We did meet with many of the service providers in the homelessness space, and Mr. Doos, Theo Doos, and Larry from Mercy House spoke very plainly and very clearly to us and said that it would be a pretty significant task for them to expand their services there at the Brundisley Navigation Center. And I respect Vice Mayor's challenge to continue to press upon them that we need to look at ways to expand, given the challenge when it comes to homelessness. But I would argue that they've already been challenged. They were challenged with the initial expansion, up to 249 beds, nearly 250. And they were very clear in stating that there have been significant challenges internally in their operations. And I know that some members on this dais knows what it means to run a business, to run an organization. And at certain points, you need to understand what scaling means. And if you don't have that ability to build capacity, we can, we can hurt the integrity of that organization. And the culture, we had a good conversation about the culture of Mercy House and how supportive it is of all of the residents. And really, the question that they posed to us is, do you want quality or do you want quantity? And for me, when dealing with a vulnerable population, we want quality all day, every single day. And they have done an excellent job up until this point. They continue to move folks out of the shelter into permanent supportive housing. And to me, that is the goal, right? We want to end homelessness for those individuals experiencing homelessness. Now, part of that is getting folks off the street and into those emergency shelter beds. However, it's not the whole goal, right? That goal that we should be utilizing to drive our work on homelessness is to get them into stable, permanent supportive housing, and they're doing just that. And I share that because I think it's important to protect that pipeline, to make sure that they feel supported, that their staff feels supported, that they can continue to work at the pace that they're working on, even potentially improve and become more efficient. But it was very clear in that meeting that the answer may not lie at the Brundisley Navigation Center. So I would like to ask staff to additionally look at alternative sites that we could potentially invest in, whether that be for safe camping or an additional alternative emergency shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Any other requests to speak? I don't see any. This evening, I'd like to make a referral that the city take a position on three bills from state Senator Shannon Grove. The first one deals with commercial sex with a minor. And as you may recall, we supported her SB 14 that made human trafficking of a minor a serious felony and a strikeable offense. This one, SB 1414, would make it a felony to solicit, agree to engage in any act of commercial sex with a minor. Currently, perpetrators are only charged with the misdemeanor. So that's the first one. The second one deals with breast cancer, and that's SB 1172. And it would add the California Breast Cancer Research Fund and the California Cancer Research Fund to the list of voluntary income tax checkoff programs. So you'll recall that during your income, you have the option of checking if you want to donate to any. So this is just, it's an option and just expanding that to breast cancer. And the third one deals with mental health. SB 1063 would allow schools to put a QR code on student IDs that links to a county mental health resource website of the school's district's choice. It's optional. It's up to the school district, but it gives that ability for them to put this QR code so students can access county mental health resources. And this would apply only to grade seven through 12. So just referring those three items, and those will come back for your consideration. I don't see any other requests to speak, and so with that, we stand adjourned at 7:34.